Very good. With that, we'll call the meeting to order on today, March the 13th, 2024. Firstly, Michelle, if you can do a roll call for us, please.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Commissioner Garmidia.
Present.
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 Present. Okay, thank you. With that, the first order of business is approval of the minutes that were sent out. We'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we approve the minutes from last month's meeting, January 17th, 2024.
Second.
I have approval from Clark, Alderman, Clark Hubbard, second from Commissioner Young. Call for vote.
All your calls. All of them, all of them, it's Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Garmidia.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd.
Aye.
That's right. Okay, thank you very much. With that, the first thing I would ask to do is if all commissioners would go ahead and mute your phones, the first order of business will be a present, there are no voting items, but the first order of business is a presentation by Scott, who's at the podium, and we'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Ogilvy, Program Manager with Planning and Urban Design Agency, and excited to provide the Commission an update, an informational update, on recent Northside/Southside MetroLink planning and project advancements. So the first update, drumroll, please. The new name, it is now the MetroLink Green Line, building on the two existing MetroLink corridors, the Red Line and the Blue Line. But to go back a bit, throughout 2023, last year, the city of St. Louis and ByState have partnered to assess the planned Northside/Southside MetroLink route. That assessment led to an updated alignment, primarily in the middle section of the project area between Shoto and Cass Avenue. The new alignment, which we typically call the Jefferson Alignment, starts at the south end of Jefferson at Chipewa, travels north on Jefferson to Parnell, and then turns west on Natural Bridge to the intersection of Grand Avenue. And the reason for the update to the Planning Commission tonight is that at their February meeting, the East-West Gateway Board of Directors approved updating the prior 2018 alignment to this new Jefferson Alignment, AKA the Green Line Alignment. So here to give you a little more information on what we've been up to for the past year and the next steps on the project, we've got, which the city and ByState are already taking, I will emphasize, we have Chris Peller, Assistant Executive Director of Engineering Systems for Metro Transit, and Michael Booth, Director of Transportation Planning with the firm HNTB, who is working as part of a large consultant team with ByState and the city to move the project through engineering in the complex and competitive federal transit administration process, which leads to federal project funding. And then after we hear from Chris and Michael, Miriam will give a preview of some coming attractions related to the projects that the Planning Commission may see in coming months. So please, Chris, come on up.
Chris, just state your name and organization to give for us.
Sure. My name is Chris Peller. I'm the Vice President of Capital Programs for ByState Development. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Commission, for giving us this opportunity to update on this exciting project. I'm going to give a brief overview of the project, things we've done to date, and some details about the project, and then I'll turn it over to Michael. And Michael is the Deputy Project Manager for the consulting team, as Scott mentioned, and he'll talk about next steps, what's going to be happening over the next year or so, and get into a little more detail about the process that we're going to have to navigate through the federal transit administration in order to secure the federal funding. Here's some Green Line project highlights. One of the key factors in securing the federal funding is the alignment of the features of this alignment with the Justice 40 initiatives that have been this administration has put forth. It aligns up very well. We've spoken to people in the region, as well as political officials, and again, this is a perfect alignment with Justice 40, which will help us significantly with our application. Thank you. Regional support is key with the FTA, and as Scott mentioned, approval of the locally preferred alternative by East-West Gateway a couple of weeks ago is a big milestone. Again, it shows the support of the community, and that does carry a lot of weight with the FTA as we put in our application. It's a very competitive field to get the FTA funds, so they like to, they like to see that support. This project is 5.6 miles long. You can see from the rendering here. It is called MetroLink, but the system's a little bit different than our existing MetroLink. It's called a low-floor system, so it's basically going to be boarding off the curb. You won't have the high platforms like the existing MetroLink does. And here's a picture of the alignment. Scott described it. It starts up along Natural Bridge for a short piece, and then heads down Jefferson down to Cherokee. Again, 5.6 miles long. It's a change from the previously studied alignments for the Northside/Southside in that the middle of the alignment has shifted west. A couple of reasons for that, predominantly to affect my reflect changing travel patterns post-COVID-19, where it's not quite as much downtown-centric, and there's a greater dispersal of jobs and needs to get around the region. However, this alignment will still connect to downtown because right above, as Jefferson crosses our existing alignment, we will put in a new station on the existing MetroLink below that bridge, and have a station here on the new Green Line as well. So riders of the Green Line will be able to transfer to the existing MetroLink, get off there and go down the steps or the elevator, very similar to our Grand Station. So from either end, you come to that station, then you can hop down there, and you can head east to downtown Illinois, or obviously west, all the way out to the airport. So it'll be good connectivity between the two systems. But again, this new green alignment will serve a number of areas that aren't currently served by this type of transit. Some of the demographics, and this goes, is very helpful again for the Justice 40 initiative, a limited transportation access. You can see households that are without vehicles and are transit-dependent. Some of the numbers here on this slide. And again, that is very pivotal in our applications to the FTA. And the Justice 40 focuses on underserved neighborhoods, and here are some statistics within the study area, on the corridor area. It shows the percentage of residents in these various categories, and again, we'll be using that in our application. The alignment itself, as I mentioned, about 5.6 miles long. We've taken the design to 15%, and that was through the city study. And that's where it stands right now. We're at transitional phase. We're about to pick up the design. We're hoping to get the designer onboard as early as, well, we'll have it approved next week and have them onboard in April, and then they can pick up the design and take it from 15 to 30%. But right now, based on the 15% design, done some ridership modeling, and it shows 5,200 average daily boardings projected. You can see the residents and jobs accessible, portable housing units. The average operating cost is estimated to be 6.5 million, and the current cost estimate for the constructions, just over 1.1 billion at this early phase of the 15% design. That includes a great deal of contingency. And we are looking at a couple of things in order to bring that down significantly, including potentially using our existing maintenance facility rather than constructing a new one, which would save a significant amount of money. If you look at the cross-section here at the bottom, this is a typical for what the trains might look like at some sections of the street, and obviously, the street width varies. But this will be a station in the middle of the street, and you can see the two trains and a couple of driving lanes in each direction, as well as a green strip where we kind of reconstruct the whole roadway and areas. So our general schedule moving forward, as I mentioned, we've, we're in the process of hiring the designer, and the first phase will take us through 30%. Concurrently, Michael and his team are working on all the environmental work that's required to get federal funding. They've already started that effort, putting together a lot of the documentation, and that's a significant effort, significant effort. They'll be doing that over the next year, as well as the design will start over the next year to get to 30%. That'll be done most of 2025, and then once the 30% design's done, and we're able to secure the federal funding, we'll look forward to taking the design from 30 to 100%, completing that in 2026, and then construction scheduled from 27 to 30. Here are some upcoming project activities that Michael's going to walk you through. Again, immediately in 2024, we're going to be focused a lot on design and environmental work, and I'll turn it over to Michael.
Hello, Michael Booth, HNTB Corporation, part of the consulting team supporting ByState Development and the city in this project. So in the coming years, in 2024, what we're working on currently is, as mentioned, the project alignment, having the locally preferred alternative approved through East-West Gateway is very important because as FTA, then it allows us to begin the environmental process, so we're starting that process off this year. And then we'll actually start public engagement in April, where we'll be doing outreach in regards to the environmental review, another opportunity for everyone to give their comments and concerns about what they see on the project and the benefits and the impacts to their neighborhood, and then progressing with the preliminary design, as Chris talked about. That's very important. The 30% goes to, will be in June of next year, and then progresses into '25. And in '25, that's when we'll actually be completing the environmental review process, which is actually where FTA would be concurring and approving the environmental document. And that allows the project then to progress into the next stage for the capital investment grant, which is the FTA funding. And that would then be in regards to some of the environmental development ratings that we would have to meet the criteria with FTA and for the grant itself. And I believe the next slide. So on this one right here, this shows you all the different angles and all the different criteria that are required by FTA. And so it's based on a percentage, and it's basically based on the ridership, economic development, where you have congestion relief, mobility improvements, and then it looks at the financial picture. What is the local financial? What is the commitment of funds regionally and locally and from the federal? And then it looks at overall, what is the project rating? And medium is what we are going to be going for, and we will be getting. And then the project is, continues through the capital investment grant, and there would be a full funding grant award in approximately the second first quarter of 2027, when the construction is starting. So those are some of the main highlights of the technical parts of the project, which is environmental and working with FTA for the capital investment grant in the next two years with the design. Would be questions at this point.
Miriam, are you going to present now, or do you want? Are you, you're following up in this, correct?
Yes.
Then why don't you follow up, and then we'll come back for questions from the, from the Commission.
Great. Yeah, next slide. So you probably saw on that kind of pie chart, one of the rating criteria relates to economic development, and a portion of how that's considered is land use policy. This is a very big, complex project, and also, it's kind of now becoming, you know, real, in a sense, following a lot of work, really, you know, many years, years of work studying the project, as well as the potential for transit-oriented development. And so now that the locally preferred alternative has been adopted, he would like to recommend some kind of near-term steps to start to move land use policy, and specifically zoning in a transit-supported direction in this corridor. So there are some near-term parts of that. And actually, as soon as next month, we would like to bring a strategic land use plan map amendment to you all to consider, and that would simply be to reflect the latest locally preferred alternative, or now the locally preferred alternative on our local comprehensive planning map. And actually initiate a zoning text amendment that would take some small steps in a transit-oriented direction related to increasing flexibility around density, height, parking requirements. So not, not a big leap forward, but some small steps forward in a transit-supported direction. So some of those things you'll begin to see here next month, and we'll be doing actually some outreach and communication about that in the coming month, prior even to, to bringing it before you all. Next slide, please. So I discuss some of the sort of near-term moves, well, not, not moves really, policy updates in support of the project and in support of, you know, transit access, long-term. And we are kind of thinking ahead to some of the medium-term things that on the planning and land use policy side we can do with this project in mind. So of course, the, you know, the large process to update the strategic land use plan as the land use element of the comprehensive plan, course, transit infrastructure existing and proposed, is a very important consideration in that. So that we expect to provide clear guidance in the transit-oriented corridors or transit corridors. Also, the Project Connect neighborhood plans, many of those neighborhoods are, you know, very close to the proposed Green Line. And so in that process, the Green Line and the sort of transit-oriented development opportunities will be, will continue to be part of the conversation. Also, medium term, we are exploring the creation of a form-based district for the entire corridor that would cover kind of the half-mile around all proposed stations. And that would provide more specific guidance around building envelope. It may be more specific about use preferences that that would be transit-oriented or, you know, potentially stand in the way of transit-oriented development, and kind of grapple with some of those things. But that would be a longer-term process that would also have the benefit of the updated strategic land use plan and updated neighborhood plans around NGA and in the Project Connect neighborhoods. But that is sort of a preview of coming attractions, but with the Commission first, we, we just wanted to make sure you had kind of the, the big picture about the project and the timing ahead over the coming years before we start bringing kind of specific policy recommendations to you all.
All right. With that, we will typically go through, I'll go through questions for the Commission. I'll ask, Chris, if you, you may be the one that directs who gets what questions. At that point, Alderman Cohn, are you on, and do you have any questions? Not hearing from Alderman Cohn, Alderman, Alderman woman, Clark Hubbard, any questions?
Sorry. Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time. I'm just taking all the information, and if I think of something before we end, I'll just raise my hand.
All right. Commissioner Banton.
Yes, excuse me. Good evening. First of all, I just want to disclose to everyone that in my regular day job, I am potentially going to be working on this job at Mackey Mitchell Architects as the station architect for the job, so just to get that out there. But my questions tonight, I think it's obviously a great project. I am curious to hear more about sort of the zoning changes that the city is anticipating as part of the project to help spur sort of transit-oriented development. I believe there was a TOD study done within the past five years or so that I have been unsuccessful to find any information on. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
You are remembering correctly. Yeah, there, there have been several TOD studies done over the years. The most recent one, I believe, was completed in 2019. I could be off on that year, but that study, several neighborhood plans, formerly adopted neighborhood plans in the corridor, all kind of point in the direction of the types of zoning policy recommendations we would bring before you all.
Is that study publicly available somewhere?
I'm sure it is. I'm not sure where it is, but we'll follow up to make sure everybody has access to it.
I think the answer is that there are some companion documents with it from using form-based code around station areas. And we'll get a little menu of those various studies. It likely will include the 19, 2019 one. But you'll enjoy all of them.
After the recording, that was Don Rob.
Great. Thank you. That's really all, all the questions I have at the moment. Appreciate the presentation to the Commission, though. Thank you.
Commissioner Bo has.
No questions. Just great to see this moving forward.
Commissioner Bradley.
So obviously, myself and my staff have been intimately involved with the team on this project. I believe it's going well, and I think we're certainly excited about a great project for the city and for transit. So yeah, appreciate everybody supporting the project. Thanks for the presentations tonight. You guys did a great job, and sorry I was late to the meeting.
We will, we won't hold you accountable for that, but if you're in the blues game, tell the truth. With that, Commissioner, Commissioner Garmidia.
Thanks so much. Very excited about this project and look forward to seeing what else we can do at the Board of Aldermen to move it forward beyond just zoning reforms.
Commissioner Cohn.
No questions. Just, I'm also heavily involved in this project, and I'm excited to continue seeing it move forward. BPS and planning and other departments have done an incredible job working with ByState to bring this forward, so thank you for being here.
Commissioner Williams.
No questions.
Okay. As Chair, then, I'm going to feel really bad because I'm about to ask a very parochial question here. This goes down Jefferson. That's the plan. And as I think you described it as low-floor, meaning it's, meaning street level.
That's correct.
There's a lot of intersections that this will cross, and a lot of traffic that's going to be generated in the future from NGA, the city investment in the city. On safety, and I'm sure all these are probably 20 or 10,000-foot questions, but can you address some of that? And are we already just replacing a MetroLink with a bus, with a bus route? A bus route with a MetroLink? Where are we adding to the, where are we adding in this route?
Discuss your question and concern about the traffic and intersections first. Yeah, that had been looked at, and the first part of the study was, well, the study originated, right, in the 2000s, 2005, I think it started originally. And that's where the alignment and the basic mode was decided. It's since carried forward into 2018 and then into this study. Yes, traffic is something that is looked at, and that's part of the environmental process. It already has been looked at during the first 15% work that was done by the city. And we're going to get into it in greater depth, obviously, as we take it forward to 30%. So we'll work with the city, and there's also MoDOT is one of our project partners that we're working with as we cross over I-64, which is their bridge, and under the I-44 bridge as well. So we're all working together and trying to make sure that the traffic is able to flow with the implementation. A lot of this area, especially, the alignment, especially down south, is pretty wide, and a lot of lanes, but it gets a little tighter in the middle there. And so we're going to have to get creative and figure out what we can do to keep, maximize the available space for, for traffic. So that is something we're looking at, we are looking at, and we'll continue to look at as part of the environmental process. We can't significantly degrade that. We have to make sure that obviously the city can still flow smoothly. As I mentioned, the alignment and the type of mode for the slow floors is something that's been picked and carried forward over the past almost 20 years. And we can go into a lot of the reasons for that back from the original study, but again, we're just taking it from the city and the study that you guys performed, and then we're implementing the study moving forward.
Since everybody else is involved in Project Dom Night, I needed, I needed to go with that. So it's about five of you are already engaged in it. With that, I have no more questions. Thank you for your, your presentation. With that, any, any party, any other statements, Don, for, okay? That's number E. Thank you, gentlemen. Vote for your time and presentation. There'll be more coming to it.
I had one question.
And that, identify and go ahead.
My name is Maya White. I'm one of the neighborhood managers in the Project Connect planning area, and I was wondering, are these going to be ATO trains, or will these be trains that are driver-operated?
Tip, and just for future notice, this is not a public hearing, but we will, I will allow the conversation from public at this point, just to address that.
Thank you.
Sure. These will be driver-operated trains.
Thank you. All right. With that, the next item, I see Jonathan stepping up. So guess what?
Good evening, Chair, and thank you, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jonathan Roper. I am the City Planning Executive, Neighborhood Planning with the Planning and Urban Design Agency. And tonight, I have two neighborhood updates to bring you to, exciting updates. The first being.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Drumroll. The first being, next slide, please. So a few years ago, the Planning Commission listed the, adopted the first six priority neighborhoods for neighborhood planning. We're moving into the, we moved into the first already with Project Connect, and actually, that was Maya White, the Project Connect manager, who she just spoke that question. The next three areas, the Ville, Greater Ville, and Kingsway East is planning area, we're calling number one. The number two is Mark Twain, Walnut Park West, Walnut Park East, and planning area three, Baden-North Point. The city has launched a request for proposals for planning assistance in those areas, meaning that translates to we are gearing up to start in the Ville this summer with consultants and a neighborhood planning process. We will begin in the second planning area with Mark Twain and Walnut Parks later in the summer. We're staggering that just a little bit, followed by Baden and North Point in the fall as well. And those planning processes would conclude here at the Planning Commission mid-next year. And we would hope that after community engagement, a robust amount of data analysis, community engagement support, and scenario planning, modeling what the neighborhood could be, we will have those plans, and we would move to then into implementation stage with other departments and the community too. Next slide, please. And this is just the planning areas, just timeline, just a quick timeline turnaround. So where you can see Project Connect at the top one, but then you have planning areas one, two, and three kind of being staggered, but beginning later this year. Second updates is the neighborhood planning strategy. So this might look familiar, and I apologize to Aaron and maybe Grace where before your tenure in this Planning Commission, this was something at the Planning Commission, Alderman, Clark Hubbard, sorry. This is a neighborhood planning strategy. It's accumulation of work put in before I even arrived here with the city. But there is a neighborhood planning strategy that was created and updated in 2021. And after experience with different planning initiatives, including the WE LAB with the Western Vinicidae Park, North Central, the ongoing Project Connect, still reading through more case studies, seeing how other neighborhoods are doing with their plans, we've had, we evolved our process to better suit the needs of the neighborhood planning process. Overall, the modifications that we'll go through in this, just look at reduction in the planning phases from a nine-phase, nine-phase planning process to six. It revised a little bit of the sequence and clarified the responsibilities and roles that you'll see in the process. So this has that previous planning process in 2021 with the nine steps on it. And this, in short, would be from the left side, just the quick bleaker planning process, and then the following steps that, this wasn't meant for you to be able to really read, but just to show what it looks like overall. Next slide. And this is just a comparison between, you know, here's a phase one here, introductions you read in bold, you know, kind of what's going on. We're kind of comparing the two just to show, we're trying to clarify and make communication between what we're trying to do more effective with people. So communicating to the public, communicating to the towns. And when we start strong with communication, then we have a great process. So, next slide. And this just shows a side-by-side between the 2021 process and 2024, where on the right side, you'd see phases one through four kind of being combined, but also just. but also just a little bit reimagined, just renamed, reimagined. Five and six have been combined into one, visioning, goal setting. Phase seven has a name change, phase eight prioritization. We removed that one because that just happens every step of the way. When you're talking to people from the first day, they tell you there are priorities. So we're really starting with the priorities and just refining and building on those. So that's why that was removed. And then phase, we actually added a phase four plan review that after all community engagement, it gives us the time to say, hey, let's take a breather, look what we have, make sure that's good going forward. And then we move to adoption. Next slide. And also with this planning update, these, well, not maybe this particular slide, but in 2021, Cecilia DeVorak, the former City Planning Executive here, provided the commission with an update. So, and she provided neighborhood planning strategies, those covers that you saw, the colorful covers at the beginning of this presentation. So there are some areas to modify. This is just one. That's the previous planning process, next slide. And this is the next page that we are just replacing it with. So the, the nine phases, it's six phases, and we also add some text as well to explain. And this comes from, just, and we have, I mentioned the planning processes with the city, but we also have existing, or case studies with other cities with how their planning processes look, and we're taking it from, not taking it from there, but we're considering what they do and to inform our decision as well. This is just another planning process example for the, as Miriam mentioned, the Strategic Land Use Plan update is going on. So this is just their process too that we looked at, next slide. And finally, one other update is the, there was a particular reference to a planning committee and the, how that should be assembled. So there was pretty detailed information regarding the planning committee that has not ringed true in the planning processes that we've seen with Project Connect and we expect going forward. So it just referenced a planning committee or steering committee of seven to 10 members. So that honestly is gonna be, it could be exceed that. So that's why we're looking, we're removing that. And those are the updates. So we launched a request for proposal due March 28th for three planning areas. Looking for consultants for that. We'll start in the summer and also just modifying the neighborhood planning process flow chart and strategy.
With that, again, we'll just walk down. If Alderman Cohen is on, if he has any questions. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Banton.
Nope, very exciting. No questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions. Thanks for the presentation, Jonathan.
Commissioner Garmedia.
Just a quick reminder, how were the planning areas chosen? And like, when does, when do you pick like the next neighborhoods?
Oh, thank you. The planning areas were chosen are based upon a number of data and analysis. So some were stats of different crime statistics, population statistics, vacancy statistics that then got accumulated into formulas. And then we saw which ones that were, I would say generally to most neediest on the list, and that's how that was assembled. We would look later this year to have the next consideration of planning areas. Didn't say the next month or two, but sometime this year.
And will the Planning Commission be able to chime in on that?
Yes. Yes, that will come before the Planning Commission as it did before in 2021.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Cohen.
No questions. Great work, Jonathan.
Commissioner Williams.
No questions.
The chair has no questions. With that, thank you, Jonathan, for your work. I know you're keeping it up to date and will keep us up to date and on schedule and on task. With that, the next presentation comes from our, from Don, who's walking to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Jonathan just made mention of the work that we're doing with neighborhood planning in the broad sense, and also reminding you that we're hiring consultants for neighborhood planning. And one of the things we have been able to do lately is hire staff, some staff. We've had vacancies now for over a year, but Dylan has just joined us as an urban designer on Scott staff. And we have others that are, we're interviewing in the current process. So that's a feel-good moment that we're getting folks in various parts of our field. But I'm gonna give you just an update on some of the other things that we're doing contractually, so we change it. So the Strategic Land Use Plan update, big deal. This is a room of people that know about the Strategic Land Use Plan. Its history, its relative simplicity, but legal document status from the time when we adopted it in 2005. And now with the consultants who've been here, made presentations to you with Miriam leading. The consultants with Miriam leading has made a presentation to Cabinet. So it's midway in the robust process and under contract with us. The Citywide Transportation Mobility Plan, the kickoff was, that was yesterday. It's co-led by BPS, PDA, Streets is involved. It's an exciting project that's going along with, in tantrum to all this. The Sustainability Plan, again, sort of a leading edge plan from what occurred about 10 years ago. We're in the procurement process for that. We're now at the contract negotiation stage for entering into that contract to do an update of the Sustainability Plan. I'll make a pause for a minute to tell you that in our procedures for putting out RFPs and notifications, it's a formal process. It includes all the things you would think about in terms of notice and publications and soliciting, but also includes a five-member selection committee, of which I'm pleased to say there are two members of the Planning Commission that are on that committee, Commissioner Keong and Commissioner Garmini. And we appreciate their hard work in those selection processes that they've been involved with, along with a member of the Comptrollers team, and some variation between the committee members from the members of the Board of E&amp;A, because we're doing so many procurements. I will say, part of that is a function, because it's mainly eco-devo money, of moving around a little money because we didn't have salaries to pay to be able to do this robust level of solicitation for consultants. Solicitations for the Sustainability Plan gleaned 13 responses from teams from all over the country. We interviewed four, and like I say, we're in the contracting process with that, the leading firm. So I'm pleased to say that, but 13 responses. Project Connect Neighborhood Planning, and you just heard, you know, we're informational session here tonight without many voting items, no voting items, but you'll see one delegated item. So our team member from Project Connect, Maya was here, listening in and getting familiar with this because she's leading the Project Connect effort. They had an interruption in their consulting work that occurred mid, late year last year. They're also in the procurement process for a consultant team to help them finish that up. Finished, meaning the planning in the six neighborhoods of Project Connect. Under the general, we call it the franchise from, from the Planning Commission and PDA with Jonathan's help to mold things because obviously the neighborhoods are clients. But the Planning Commission is a client, because at the end of that process, these will be neighborhood plans from the Project Connect area that probably late this year will be coming to the Planning Commission for adoption. So that selection is in process to help that team pick up where a previous consultant worked and maintain the momentum in the neighborhood. That's great stuff. The three neighborhood planning areas, you just heard that from Jonathan. It's been exciting. We're in the middle of that process, and Jonathan, no, he hasn't pulled all his hair out, but he's working like crazy because we're in a session now where I'd like to have, when we're, we're seeking consultants, that there's a live session after we've released it for participants to come and question us. And here's some extra answers. It's a formal process, so the questioning is happening. We do it on Zoom. But there are all those questions are documented. More questions are allowed to come into us, and we're at that very stage. So we had a session where we solicited questions. We answered some in a temular way. Jonathan and his staff are diligently putting them in order, making them be cohesive as to what's being asked and answering them, and we'll post those answers on the web. So all the participants can see the answers to these various questions to help them guidance in getting the most detailed and quality RFP response to us. I find that particularly exciting. When I went in and checked on Jonathan this afternoon, because there's some things that we're going to produce as links that are examples, there's answers to the questions. And Jonathan showed a whole new list of questions, or a whole new addition to our list of questions of our potential applicants. Really getting in, thinking about it, and asking us questions. That's a good thing, because we want to be able to answer those questions. And Jonathan's working hard to get them, so we'll post them on Friday. So that's all very good. And to round out on what we're also doing is we're doing a procurement. This is one that's, that's sort of last on our list in the sequencing and timing process is a Historic Preservation Consulting Request. And to the Historic Preservation Consultants, we're asking them to examine our current local historic districts. All of them have been created over time. There's a little bit of a hodgepodge of their regulations. Some of them don't have a common understanding of some basic things like definitions. Anyway, we're going to ask a consultant, soliciting a consultant that will review all those 18, put them in a, in a system as a template to help us guide looking at new ones. And they're going to review an existing area for, for how it relates to the template. Because the template will be part, and consultants, when we get to the final contract negotiations, may also very well be helping to create a new historic district following those procurements. So it's, it's exciting. This is a lot going on. I smile, and that usually SLDC and CDA are entities that have money and opera money that are doing things with the community and those money-type things, and farming that out in so many different ways and procedures to do that. We've been kind of busy now using our procedures to get people under contract to help with consulting. So it's been a busy time in that, but we're doing it at speed to get Jonathan, the consultants, in those three areas that he talked about, and when they'll be kicking off, and be an active member of getting those neighborhood plans done. So that's really all I have, but I'll open it up for a little questions, if there are any. With, oops, the key thing, aha, and we talk about plans. And there is, you know, I sometimes, when people ask me, Don, you're a planner? Yeah, I'm a wedding planner. It's a term that's used a lot, but we're city planners, urban planners, community planners. But what's really a good reminder, and it's in other communities, it's been part of the more basic DNA for a long time, that the planning that we're doing, we're adopting as authorized under state law. And in the ring you see around these connecting activities is, it's the Comprehensive Plan under state law. And we want to be as, as reminder that we have these actions going on. The land use element, which is the Sloop, the Sustainability Plan, mobility, the Economic Justice Development Plan is something that we're looking at as adding as a chapter into the Comprehensive Plan, as is with housing and other things. You see all these, and the ring around it is a Comprehensive Plan. And being adopted by the Planning Commission makes them legal documents, and their plans, sometimes we use visions, but they're plans, legal plans. And as I say, then define, create the vision, legal vision, documented vision. And what we always need to remind ourselves, plans can change, but when they're adopted, they're the guide for that. And that's an important thing that we'll be building on and making sure we get the gravitas so people understand that when we get them adopted. With that, I'll take any questions before I turn it over to Miriam to give a few last moment comments about what we're doing and things like that.
Thank you. With that, I'll start with Alderman Cohen, if he's on. If not, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, any questions?
No questions.
Welcome. With that, Commissioner Banton.
No questions. Thanks, Don.
Commissioner Boas.
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions. Thanks, Don.
Commissioner Garmedia.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keong.
No questions.
Commissioner Williams.
No questions.
With that, we will turn it over to Miriam. Thank you.
Fantastic. And as you heard, Jonathan's the guru of neighborhood planning now.
Good work, Jonathan. Thank you.
So I, I know it hasn't been an action item-packed evening, but hopefully action-packed. Nonetheless, I'll, I'll be super quick with my final update. So next slide, just want to make sure the commission knows, and anybody tuning in knows about some upcoming events related to the Strategic Land Use Plan Update Process. I think I sent these out by email, but just a reminder about a community workshop this coming Tuesday that will involve the release of the second edition of the Sloop Scoop and a bunch of other activity and discussion. And then also several following virtual workshops and small group workshops open to anybody in the community to attend, though I think they may be size limited, so please do register in early April. So something's coming up. And then, next slide. I also wanted the commissioners specifically to know about late March working groups that are part of the Strategic Land Use Plan process. So if you recall, we have three working groups that we set up that are kind of the technical advisory groups in addition to the steering committee, the more citizen-led steering committee working group we set up for this process. But those working groups are organized around themes, equity, resilience, and quality of life. And I just wanted to extend an invitation to commissioners who are interested in sitting in on those. If you are interested, please reach out to me and I can share the details with you. But I, I just realized commissioners may be kind of curious about some of the in-the-weeds nuts and bolts discussion that's happening as part of this process, in addition to the significant updates we provide to you, a major milestone. So just wanted to extend an invitation there, and that was it.
No more presentations. With that, any, any final questions from the commission?
I had noted, I know the survey is getting ready. I'm sorry. Do I need to ask this thing first? Okay, I'm sorry. The survey closes on the 15. Is that a hard stop? How's it looking on people to respond?
Participation's looking pretty good. It's not a hard stop. I think what we wanted was to really get the bulk of the participation before this next community workshop, so we could kind of reflect back to the community what we're hearing through that survey, but I believe we're, we're keeping it open.
Okay, and is anybody tracking kind of the areas, neighborhoods, wards, size that most, that the responses are coming from? So we can kind of target if there's an area that we haven't heard from at all for these next two days, or?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have participation from everywhere in the city, but it's not even. And so I actually have in, in my inbox a list from the consulting team, a, a list of zip codes where responses are relatively underrepresented. So tomorrow I'm going to be reaching out to neighborhood managers and other community partners who I think, you know, would have relationships in those parts of the city to help us reach, reach more people.
Please add me to the list if I can help you with any of the zip codes, not just in the 10th ward with any of them for that matter. And also I want to publicly thank you all for the meeting that you did in Academy Sherman Park neighborhood. It was, I got a lot of good feedback on that meeting. I think it was, I just love the way that you all are taking the opportunity and intentional efforts to meet people where they are. So again, let me know if I can help for this last push and whatever we do to get the information out moving forward.
Really appreciate that, and I think that's a good point. If there are people. Really appreciate that. And I think that's a good point. If there are people listening or commissioners here who feel like they would like us to come to them, you know, we can't do that every time, but we we know that these major community workshops just simply don't work for everybody in the community. So please, if you feel, if you are in a community who hasn't, you're worried does not being heard in this process, please reach out and we'll figure something out.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, hearing no more questions. Again, welcome Dylan to the staff.
Can you have Dylan come into the screen podium so I can see him?
And while he's coming to the podium, so everybody can see him, just a quick note, the agenda says our next meeting is April 10. I've already challenged the staff to consider looking at that, because on April 10, the Blues play the Blackhawks downtown, and we probably don't want to try to get in the building on that day. So they're going to look at a different day.
Yeah. So please, yep, I think, expect an email from us suggesting we reschedule to the 17th, which is the following Wednesday.
We tried to move the Blues and Blackhawks, but they didn't want to change it.
Yeah.
With that, entertain a motion?
So moved.
They moved to second to close meeting. With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all.
What was the motion? Entertain a motion?
No one.